All right, next on the agenda, we have a child nutrition report.
Chairman Reinhardt, members of the Board, Dr. Baldwin, it's not finally meet you, Chairman Reinhardt, and I have a brief presentation, kind of a continuation of what we started in September. And Chairman Baldwin, if you were not able to see it, I did bring you a copy.
Thank you very much.
This is just a picture again of our, kind of our Buncombe County symbol for child nutrition, which is feeding kids globally. Wanted to address factors affecting our revenue right now. This is kind of tying into the action agenda item that we'll address later. Universal breakfast, we have increased breakfast participation. The new meal pattern has decreased our lunch participation. Healthier supplemental sales items has also decreased our revenue. Meal type, great news, breakfast, the difference between 2012, 2013, 2013, 2014. We've seen an increase of 39,539 meals. And if you want to see the benefits of that, please take a trip to TC Robertson and watch the principal, Ms. Amy Rooney cheer her students on as they go through the breakfast line. It's just a wonderful experience, so I hope you can all do that sometimes. We have had a decrease in our lunch participation, 123,272. I attribute that to the healthier meals and teaching children how to eat whole wheat biscuits and more whole grains and more fruits and vegetables. A challenge that here, but one through nutrition education, we can overcome. And then our supplemental sales, serving the healthier items, no Little Debbie's, the smaller portions, no Gatorades at 20.9 ounces. We are losing and are projected to lose for the year $203,000. Our school meal price comparisons, again, elementary in 2012, 2013, 2013, 2014. Elementary, we had a five cent increase. Intermediate, middle and high, we had a 10 cent increase.
Quick question, that previous slide was the, is that the forecast?
Uh, it was the previous, that was the actual.
Actual.
Mm-hmm, the actual. Uh, this one actually addresses the forecast, and this is looking at 97 serving days if the meal prices were to be reduced, which would probably be in effect in January. With the current meal price, our forecasted revenue based on current trends and what we are feeding would be 1,179. And then if we did the reduction in meal price, 1,149.18, which was really only a cash flow difference of 38,106. So I want to go back to a previous screen. And if you'll look at that 39,539 breakfast that we've served, that kind of breaks us even on that universal breakfast, because before, we charged a dollar per breakfast for each student. And by not charging a family for their breakfast and feeding the children universally, we've actually saved the parent $5 a week, the $1 they'd be paying per day. And when you look at the lunch increase for high school, it's a 50 cent per week, so it's still a 4.50 per week saving for the family. Reductions that we're seeing right now with the child nutrition program, the $38,000 if we were to reduce the lunches. The reimbursement that we receive from the federal government based on the lack of participation for lunch, 227,948. Our loss due to supplemental sales, 121,000. So January to June snapshot, again, including the meal reduction, we are looking at the possibility of a $380,544 loss. Other revenue intangibles, because I don't have the data to give you actual figures, but things that do affect the program and are working against us right now, USDA entitlement dollars are being reduced based on participation, which could lead to a possible reduction in our workforce, because we set our labor based on meals per labor hour and participation and our generated revenue. Continued loss in supplemental sales due to healthier choices in items. And then, of course, the federal government shutdown affected us, because until they reopened, we were receiving no reimbursement dollars to operate. We were using our own funds, and we currently have a 3.3 month operating balance.
And we're required to keep how much of an operating balance?
Three.
Three months.
And when I began in June, we were at 3.9, and we're currently at 3.3, so we've had to use some of that to survive, if you will, the government shutdown.
Okay.
Okay, questions?
Is the, you mentioned, or there was a couple of bullet points there that were federal governors, and I don't think it does, but did the federal sequestration that has affected a lot of other programs in our schools, does it have any effect at all with our food programs?
We were next in line to, to...
So at this point, it didn't?
At this point, it did not. At this point, it did not. We actually, as of October 1st, we received notification that we were not receiving any federal funds, but we fortunately had the funds to cover that, but did not have to go into reserves, because it did not. But the threat was there.
But they, they did reimburse you, or they will, for those dollars?
That's correct.
Going kind of forward a little bit to on the agenda, we have a motion to reduce the lunch prices back to where they were. The federal government requires that we be at a certain point, within how many more years do we have?
Fifteen years.
What, for the?
To meet...
To meet all the regulations and policies?
Yes.
Well, next year is good, next, two years, two years probably?
We have two years.
Oh, two years. Next year will be the most stringent changes in the supplemental sales items, which is our all a cart, so expect to see a major hit in, in our supplemental sales, which is about 5 to 7 percent of our current revenue.
So if we, if we made the decision tonight to reduce the lunches back to where they were before, does that mean in the next year or two, we're going to have to raise prices that much more to get...
That's what I'm afraid of.
Okay, to get to where we need to be with the federal requirements?
Yes.
So, so in essence, we might save a little bit of money now, but they're going to pay more later if, if we do that.
And we're probably not going to save any now. We're probably going to break even, and this was a incremental growth, one nickel here and a dime there. And, and we can certainly let, I'm very comfortable marketing with people and saying with the universal breakfast program, we've given you $5 a week. Unfortunately, we've had to use 50 cent of that for meal increase. But if we wait and really get into trouble with supplemental sales and the meal patterns, we're working to get the participation high, we're working to educate the children, we want them to eat breakfast, we want them to eat lunch with us. But if they don't, we will not remain in good a financial standing. And I would hate to have to come to you next year, in my second year, and say, "I need a 50 cent increase, please." So I would rather just do this in small increments and very methodically.
Um, it's my understanding that by offering the free breakfast to all students, we actually get reimbursed more money than what students were paying. For example, that we could get reimbursed up to a $1.85 per student, depending on how many free and reduced lunches are offered at a school, or how many students are on the free and reduced lunch program. Whereas students were paying only a dollar, and for the paying students, you were getting reimbursed, I may not have this right, 29 cents, I think, in effect.
There's 28, 28.
Yeah, a dollar 28, where as now...
No, just 28, not a dollar 20, just...
Well, I mean, I'm talking about the student paying the dollar plus the 28 cents. Whereas now you can get reimbursed up to a $1.85 per student by offering everybody the free breakfast. So it seems that there would be an increase in revenue from the breakfast program, especially the more that participate in it.
No, we as a board agreed to feed the students at the free, if you will, price, but the reimbursement per category doesn't change. So really, when you look at the increase, and I have it in a very detailed spreadsheet broken down, for example, 170 students more free by category, but the reimbursement is still the same. So it's 28 cents for the paying, a dollar 28 for the reduced, and a dollar 58 for the free. So what we have found as is that more of the paying students are taking advantage of the universal breakfast. So we're depending on, we're breaking even, which is fine, we're fine, but most, most exciting about it, I think, Ms. Baldwin, is that we're feeding these children and feel like really good partners in education. And they're going to class with full bellies, which is good.
So a school that has 80 or 90 percent of the students getting on a free or reduced program, you don't get reimbursed more for those students for the free breakfast than you do for the regular?
For our free student, we get reimbursed a dollar 58, but that's assuming that your participation isn't at 90 or 100 percent. We're still breakfast countywide, only feeding about 44 percent and out there marketing to get more and more in. So yes, the more you feed, the more federal reimbursement that you get, but we're still struggling with meal participation based on the challenge of the healthier meal options.
It's, yeah, the reason that I put the motion on the agenda to reduce the price back to the previous level was because in May, the federal government offered schools a waiver that had at least three months' operating expenses, that they did not have to raise the lunch prices, but we weren't aware of that in June when we did raise them. I do feel like it's a burden on the working poor who are borderline, they're just above that level, they can't receive any help with the lunches or breakfast program, well, lunch program, rather, because it does cost an extra $18 or so per student, depending on what school, if they're elementary or middle or high school, per year for their lunches.
The working, the working poor would qualify for the reduced rate, correct?
The working poor would qualify for the reduced rate, and what we're seeing is that all levels are increasing, are participating, paying more in the breakfast program, because it is at the free cost for each student.
Correct.
And again, the reimbursement is based on their category, so there, it's not an even plate. And what I'm finding is the decrease is in lunch, which means they're not hungry, but you have some schools that breakfast is here, it depends on serving times, so I'm really more excited about the meeting breakfast. And we've gone back to hot biscuits and wrapped biscuits and proteins and serving some good foods and getting ready to put fresh fruits and vegetables on trays, so yes, the working poor would qualify for...
Well, I'm defining them as those just above the level for reduced lunch.
But, but please, and I empathize with them as well, but do remember with that universal, we actually gave them $5 two years ago, which was, which is a blessing, and, and I'm very pleased to announce that it's obvious that they're taking advantage of that.
Okay, Board, any other questions or comments?
$5 per week.
Per week, by not paying for breakfast.
As opposed to $18 per year.
Yeah, I think another issue has been the spend down plan for the nutrition department, and I know a lot of this happened before you arrived here, and I want to applaud you for not taking the new furniture that was ordered, the $88,000 with some of that money. You know, I just feel like it's just not right for us to charge parents so much when we can build, when you build up so much money that you have excess and you can spend it to buy yourselves new furniture, and when it really, really wasn't needed, is my understanding. I just, that's why I feel like, you know, we're doing a disservice to the public by increasing the lunch prices, just so it can be spent extravagantly. I don't know if you've come up with a new spend down plan, I know you were working on trying to, you know, see what was truly needed. I think some things may have been ordered for cafeterias that, that were not needed. I know one cafeteria, school cafeteria employee told me, you know, a steamer that they had gotten that was probably cost over $7,000 was something they didn't need, but that's before you came to...
Ms. Payne, maybe if you could take a second and explain the differences between those, those funds?
Oh, sure, well, the...
So that everyone in the audience can, can understand that there's certain things that we have to spend certain monies on, and we don't have a choice?
They're, our child nutrition funds are self-generated funds, and they are in Fund Five, and we are, they're federal funds, they're funds that we, the paying student pays, they are USDA entitlement dollars that all go into this one pot, and there is a chart of accounts that dictates how we spend that money, and that we are only allowed to have a three-month operating balance. So I'll kind of bounce and answer Ms. Baldwin's question as well. And currently, there is not a spend down place in plan, and I got approval for that through Dr. Lynn Hoggard, who is my section chief and runs child nutrition programs for the state of North Carolina. Because of the fear of the federal government shutdown, she said, "Let's hold all funds." And plus, it gave me time to get back, when I came home, sweet home, in July 1st, to review the, the program and how the money was being spent and what monies were available. And Ms. Baldwin, I appreciate that you noted that I did take the hand-me-down furniture, and they're part of the furniture spend down plan. Ms. Von Hensley, my prior administrator, when she left, she had purchased new furniture as part of the renovation project, and I did use my old hand-me-down furniture, but I looked at what she had done and found, checked with everybody in the state, that there was no misappropriation, there was no, no misallegation. It was a decision she made, and she got prior approval for that. That being said, that is water under the bridge, and we are certainly using the money now to replace equipment, and it's funny that you spoke to that steamer, because I have now identified that steamer, and am finding another school that it will be more suited for.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does that answer the question, Chairman Reinhardt?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, and I, well, I guess I, I also wanted to bring up the fund balance in the nutrition department. I have the audit from this past year, and unrestricted net assets, there were over $6 million. So, I mean, I feel that's another reason that, you know, raising the prices and putting it on the back of parents, when we have all this money, it is just, it's not ethical.
Mr. Chairman, or is a $6 million, an asset is not necessarily cash. Am I correct in that? I mean, a $6 million of assets is equipment.
I'm sorry, I used the wrong word.
No, that's wrong. This, are you looking at just the spend down?
It's the fund balance, basically.
You're looking at the spend down plan, fund balance, above and beyond the three months' operating balance.
Right.
Which was at the time 899,000, I believe.
This $6 million is the, you're like, your fund balance.
Well, that's in our stiff account, which is just the three months' operating balance we're allowed to have, and that's invested.
That's what we're required to keep on hand.
Yes, yes.
We don't have a choice.
Yes, if, if I had less than three months' operating balance, we would not be running a healthy operation, for sure. And, and learned that during the past government shutdown, because there were systems that had two weeks to one week to, two months' operating balances that were thinking about having to shut down and stopping basically feeding meals to children. So that, that's six months we are allowed to have. I mean, that's 6 million, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's the three, that's the three months we're required to keep on hand.
Right.
So...
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate you being here.
You're very welcome.
Okay. All right. Action agenda.
Mr. Chairman, would it make any sense at all to go right to Ms. Baldwin's motion there and move it to the top since we just had?
Yeah, Ms. Baldwin is making the motion to reverse the June 2013 decision to raise school lunch prices for the 2013-2014 school year. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
You'll second?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I just want to point out that I think I understand Ms. Baldwin's intent, but you can't necessarily reverse that decision, you must first seek the waiver.
Oh.
From the state. The state grants you the ability to not follow through with the new federal school equity lunch price guidelines.
Okay.
So we actually have to, and the, and the USDA actually in September just published the guidelines for how a state child nutrition agency, basically DPI, is supposed to kind of adjudicate, for lack of a better word, those waivers. So I think that probably the best motion, and Ms. Baldwin, you tell me if I'm missing something here, because I know you've done a lot of research on this, the motion should probably be to seek a waiver, and if the waiver is granted, then to reverse.
Okay, that is fine, we can change the motion.
Is that okay with you?
All right, does everyone understand what the motion is?
I think, but can it, can either she reword it or someone so?
Yeah, I move that we seek a waiver to the June decision to raise lunch prices.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I just, I also want to bring up the fact that two, at least two school districts have already reversed their decisions to raise lunch prices. Those were Alamance County, which is just slightly smaller than Buncombe in school population, and Cabarrus County, which is just slightly larger than we are. They, they sought the waiver. And this was also, the reason I found out about it was because the North Carolina School Board Association actually did a presentation, a PowerPoint, on the waiver this summer at a training for school board members, and I didn't attend the training, but another board member sent the PowerPoint to me. And so it was something that the school board association was trying to get out there to school board members and let them know that this waiver existed. So this is not just coming out of the blue. There is a precedent for reversing the lunch prices, that's been said already by Alamance and Cabarrus.
I will say that I think since we're in the, basically the middle of the school year, I would personally vote against this at this time and look at revisiting it at beginning, the end of the school year, or the first of next year, and maybe not raising prices next year, which we would be required to do also. I just, I just think from a logistical standpoint, it would be better to wait until the end of the year and revisit the idea. It does concern me, though, to either reduce the prices or hold the prices and then have a larger increase to meet the federal requirements later on. I think five or 10 cents a year versus 50 cents in a year is a little bit easier for, for folks, but that's just one board member's opinion.
Yeah, and I do think, as Ms. Payne said last, when she was here last, to address us, that the, the healthier food initiative going along with that, there will be a new contract next year. This year, since she was on, you know, just arrived in July, we rolled over this purchasing agreement, or whatever you want to call it, that we have with other counties, that they did not rebid that. So potentially, we can get lower bids for our food next year, and she's nodding her head yes. So that's one good, good thing, and I feel like the more our cafeteria employees can cook from scratch, we will actually save money, and it will be healthier. So I'm looking forward to some more healthier standards, you know, and more home-cooked food, so to speak. You know, I think we shouldn't fear, fear the future. I believe any parent would be thrilled if, you know, they heard the Board of Education reduced the lunch prices, and maybe more people would start paying for their children's school lunches. We might have a greater participation rate if the price were lower.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
Ms. Payne, could you, could you come back up? I'm sorry. I guess I could have asked you there, I don't know why.
20 minutes.
No, as the expert in this, this is your, this is your program, none of us have a crystal ball. I, I, to, to say that next year, we might get food cheaper, we also might get it in some areas more expensive. Who knows what can happen with milk prices and that, so I, I don't think we can, I think it's tough to do that. Is it your rec, what is your recommendation as the person who manages this program for the rest of this fiscal school year? Is it to maintain what we did and passed, as we passed the budget, or would it be based on what you've seen, what you've dealt with in the short time, the projections you've given us, to stay where we are and maintain this, in relative terms, incremental, smaller incremental increase as opposed to the refund and maybe having to do a larger increase? Now, does my question make any sense at all? Because I don't sound like, I don't sound like I'm making any sense to me.
It makes perfectly good sense, it sounds just like my program.
Okay.
Sounds just like my program. Based on what I've seen, I do have concerns. Supplemental sales are down $200,000, which that's, when we, we look at a spend down plan and we look at money that I hope to have had to spend on equipment, et cetera, et cetera, I may not. I may watch that money get chiseled away just in lost sales and lost participation. And then when I look at a potential for revenue of $33,000, which is what we would pass back to the community if we reduce the meal prices now...
On top of it or something else.
Yes. I don't think that's going to benefit the parent as, nearly as much as me managing, being a good steward of public funds, building partnerships with Farm to School, Learning Speed Scratch. I was at a food show yesterday, as far as the potential for bid, food decrease, it's based on the market, it's based on the Consumer Price Index, obviously, but I do think that by not rolling over, I have learned that we're paying anywhere from 5 to 9 percent margin for our food. And I think that when we go out for competitive bid with the Western North Carolina Co-op, based on my prior work experience and my relationships and other people's relationships, I'm certainly not taking credit for it alone, people are looking at us differently and more seriously, and I do expect, as long as the market holds true, more competitive pricing. So that's good news. So I would rather hold tight where we are, let us get through these rocky times as the new wellness policies and the new stricter guidelines for food in schools are finalized, if you will, adopted this year, and then look at, I would rather hold next year and manage what we have very well than to go backwards and then have to jump farther forward. Does that answer your question?
It does, and in either, in either case, we're trying to read the future and...
That's right.
We got 50 people in the room, we might get 50 people with, with different forecasts and different thoughts on how that would work.
Right, and my 97 days from Jan, January to June are certainly forecast on historical data. And, and the positive side of me says, "Well, by December, our marketing has been so good that every child will come eat with us, and so we'll have lots of money." But in reality, we probably, we are at 66 percent right now, we were at 61 when I was in here September, that's a 5 percent increase, that's very exciting for me, because I expected 3, 3 percent, so it's a crystal ball.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of asking for the waiver, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Next on the action agenda is the adoption of the 2013-2014 budget. Do I have a motion to approve the budget?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Warren, would you give us the good, the bad, and the ugly of the budget for this year?
Yes. I have four slides for you this evening.
Two of them you already have in your, in the transmittal memo, but this one, I just wanted to go over where we were last year at the initial budget and where we are this year in the initial budget. As you can see, a couple areas I want you to notice, sorry, it didn't come up as large as I want to. Oh, 27, teacher assistance, if you noticed, that was the, that was one of our larger cuts this year, and it went, our initial allotment went from 9.2 to 7.5, a reduction of 1.6, which that's where we had to come up with, with ways to, to deal with that cut. Another one I want to show you is oh, 54, which is limited English, and keep in mind, this is state budget last year compared to this year. And we were reduced 158,000, and whenever you're talking about a budget that's a little over a million dollars, that's a 10 percent cut there. So I just wanted to show you that, and, and I wanted to also point you to the classroom teachers on there. While it looks like it was decreased, keep in mind, in 12-13, we had the LEA adjustment or discretionary reserve, we had that for a couple years in the past, and how we dealt with that was to give back position allotments, because it's a better use, we don't give back a dollar for dollar. I mean, you know, it's a better use of our way of, of giving the LEA discretionary reduction back. So whenever you take that into account, the classroom teachers are pretty close to, to what we had last year, but the main, the main story to take from that is the, the reduction in teacher assistance and ESL. But the main, the main story to take from that is the, the reduction in teacher assistance and ESL. This chart just shows, and it's even smaller, but again, this is in the transmittal memo. I just wanted to go over it a little bit. This shows last year, the final allotment versus this year's where we stand right now. So this is, this is where we ended last year after all the revisions and after all the budget adjustments were done and then as of right now. Two more slides I want to show you. This one is the operating funds by purpose. In the budget overview, I gave you the total, total budget by purpose. Whenever you take out child nutrition and the capital outlay funds, that, this is what you get. And you can see 79, almost 80% of our budget is, goes to instructional services, which is what you would expect. And then finally, I wanted to show the operating budget by object. Again, whenever you take out the child nutrition fund and the capital outlay fund, you're just talking about how we operate. 88% is salaries and benefits. So just keep that in mind and that, those are, that's, I wanted to give you the percentages with the child nutrition and capital outlay in there and without. So with that, any other questions?
I have, I have a question.
Yep.
Back to the slide, and you don't have to pull it up.
Okay.
It showed where we ended up last year after all the adjustments and everything were made versus what we have received for this year. How does the state per pupil allotment end up being? Is there a difference between this year and last year?
I haven't been able to receive exactly what we have this year. It hasn't been. But the latest numbers that I have are from 2012. And for state, we were 100th overall in state per pupil, if that's.
Well, I mean, as far as dollar amount, do you have a rough idea? Are we, are we going to go up or down per pupil allotment from the state? Is it going to be about the same? Do you have any rough idea yet?
Well, again, going back to the LEA discre, the discretionary reduction. Basically what they did instead of, they got rid of that. But instead, they took cuts in specific allotments. And what they did was take an average. So unfortunately, you know, after all that has settled still, I think we're going to see, it's going to, we're going to see a decrease.
According to what you sent us, I'm sorry, I think the overall reduction was 1.38%.
Yeah.
So if it's a smaller amount and the same number of students.
Right. And fringe benefits go up, you know, the, the retirement rate increased about 1.28% and the, the health insurance went up as well.
Well, I know that, first of all, I'd like to, you know, say thank you to the General Assembly. I understand there's some more flexibility built into our budget. So we were able to shift some funds around to kind of help where we felt it was important to put money. And I appreciate, you know, having that flexibility. And I'd also like to just publicly say how much I appreciate the county commissioners. They have not only increased our funding from the county commissioners, but they've also given us a little bit more flexibility on, on some areas. And so I would just like to, you know, thank the county commissioners for, for that work. Where, where do we, federal funding, where, it's down, right?
Yes. You know, we hit, sequestration hit us hard, particularly in EC. You know, and we've, we were having to, we, we intentionally saved back some Medicaid funds that we get through the EC department that they help generate to help us bridge the gap because we knew it was going to come. And again, with Title I, we tried to do the best we could and braced for it. We also lost the education jobs funding that was there temporarily to fill the hole. And we spent the last $2.7 million of that last year. And it expired September of 2012. So all those factors play into about a 30% decrease. We had estimated, I think, a little over 17 million was going to be our budget. Or 17.8 million was going to be our budget this year and it's around 18. So it's what we expected and.
Federal.
In federal, right, yeah, federal.
Any other questions, board members?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the slide with the, the classroom teachers.
Yes.
Now, I understand that the, this is where you just fund the most expensive teachers.
Right.
And I, I still can't get my head around this $5.8 million difference.
Okay. Okay, so the $5.8 million difference is really, it has to do with the LEA reduction, the discretionary reduction that was over the past few years. Whenever that was taken, this, this chart shows before that took place.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Yeah, the second chart, he showed that is.
How much was the discretionary?
It was six, over 6 million.
Wow.
Yeah. So we gave, you know.
So we should have come out, okay.
Right, yeah. I mean, teach, like I said, teachers came out about the same. But where we saw the other cuts were to teacher's assistance and ESL.
And here again, because of some of the flexibility the General Assembly gave us, we were able to use some of those funds to, to keep some of those assistance, as well as the assistance from the county commissioners. And so, Dr. Baldwin, I think we're, are we breaking even on our teacher's assistance this year with using some of our fund balance and?
Well, again, our reduction was with 24 positions. And we also reduced in terms of months. In that state, I think where we, we also had reductions, Rhonda's, especially in our special needs exceptional children's area, we had significant reductions there in those teacher assistance, but that was federal. But you're absolutely right. The commissioners allowed us, Chairman Reinhardt, that flexibility that was originally placed in, you know, we have to put up, we have to give our commissioners a budget by May 15. Now, that's challenging when you only have one of the four pieces that, from the state. At that time, the governor placed that 1% salary increase, which I, I think he's revisiting now and hopefully others will too. But that said, our commissioners allowed us to use the flexibility there. And that essentially salvaged a large number of those K3 state teacher assistance. Can I just ask one point?
Yeah.
And Chairman Reinhardt asked you about per pupil expenditure.
Right.
We, we talk a lot about the quality of the system in terms of just the efficiency with the funding. Did I hear you correct? You said we were, out of 115 systems, the most recent, 2012, was placed as 100? Did I hear that right?
The 100 was state ranked. Overall, we're 85th.
Okay, okay. I, I think that's, again, that's important for the public to hear, especially after you heard the performance from our, regarding our state, compared to our state averages, the performance that you just heard about from the previous year with test performance. An 85th out of 115 school systems in terms of per pupil expenditure funding that's available for us. I think that's a very important point.
Yeah, I think you're right about that. And I, I'm very concerned if we're ranked 100th as far as state funds go. What can we do? How can we get that cha? I know there's a lot of the low wealth money goes to those counties that don't have the tax base that we have. So in essence, our county commissioners are supposed to be making up the difference. That's my understanding of how this works. Because we do have the tax base. And I did a little research on our property taxes, which is where we receive most of our funding. And I found something disturbing. That only 46, no, I'm sorry, 43.5% of the education budget in Buncombe, which includes AB Tech and Asheville City Schools, is from the property tax. And I could not get the county manager to tell me where the rest of that money was going, the 56.5% of the property tax. And when I compared us to Guilford County, for example, they are spending 57% of their property tax. That's more than, that's over 13% more on education. It seems to me our priorities are not necessarily, you know, where they should be with the property tax. And now our property tax is going up. Everybody's, it's been increased. And I think as a board, we need to find out, you know, exactly where this property tax is going and how more of it can come to our school system. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask your department to do some research and find out what other school districts are getting in property tax. But for us to be ranked 85th overall, it says that our county commissioners are not giving us enough money.
Well, I think if you go on the, there's a website, northcarolinatreasure.com. You can actually see, and our county commissioners, I, I have all this information. I don't have it with me tonight. But I did a little bit, you know, playing with the numbers. And I think we rank, our county ranks.
25th.
25th. 25th in, in the, the total amount of money or the per pupil spending that we receive from the county commissioners. Now, I think, I think you may be right, Ms. Baldwin, that based on the information that I saw, the percentage of the budget may be a little bit lower than, than some of the other counties. But you have to realize, you know, every, every county's a little bit different. You know, I mean, we certainly can lobby our county commissioners for more funding. I think that's on us as a board to do that. But if you go to northcarolinatreasure.com, all that information is readily available to look at. And I would encourage everyone to, you know, to take a look at it.
Right. And what you're saying actually cements my argument. Because if we rank 25th as far as what the commissioners are giving us, that reflects on the fact that some counties don't need, the commissioners don't have to give as much money because they're getting that low wealth. I mean, you have the majority of counties in North Carolina getting the low wealth money from the state because they don't have the tax base. So.
Well, that's a state formula. That's not anything to do with the county.
Actually, let's say if there's only 10 counties maybe who aren't getting the low wealth money, then we should rank in the top 10 as far as our county commissioners expenditures on education to make up for that fact that the state's not supplying it.
Here again, we, that's, I think that's our job as a board to.
That's why I do have a problem with the budget. Because other counties are also giving their teachers some bonuses. Alamance decided to do this in the past. Charlotte Mecklenburg, Wake County gave bonuses to teachers. We didn't even ask our county commissioners, I don't think. At one point, we thought the state was going to give a raise and we were going to ask, and the county was asked to help give raises to those people who were not paid through state funds. But then that went away. So, so did that county money. So I, I feel like, you know, as a board, we need to be more assertive in asking the commissioners to fund some of these things. It's not all up to the state. In fact, we rank, I believe it was 11th. I don't have it in front of me. Yeah, it's 11th in the country as far as how much funding our state legislature gives schools in North Carolina. So all of this points to me, to the county commissioners. And, and I want to know, you know, where that property tax money is going, if it's not going to the school system.
Yeah, but I will, I'll have to say this, you know, that, that 11th ranking, I don't, I'm sure it's probably accurate.
It's political data.
But, but it's the way, most school districts are not funded by the state in, in the United States. Most school districts are funded by local money. So there's, I, I think you have to be careful with that number in just throwing that out, that the state is, you know, spending, you know, I think you have to look at the total amount that's coming from the state and the county. Because most districts in the United States, the school board is the taxing authority for the majority of their funds.
Exactly. Again, that shows that our county could be putting a lot more money out compared to other states where the county commission, where the, the, the school has that local taxing authority.
We should lobby the General Assembly and then we can set our own tax rate.
I don't know about that.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Is that okay? Just to point out, this budget is balanced with, using fund balance of roughly 4.3. And that will go away next year. In other words, it's a, we don't, using a fund balance is not a reoccurring way of funding a business.
Once you spend it, it's gone.
So just be aware that next year is going to be tougher than this year because we don't have that type of money to put back in to balance the budget. And I just had one technical question I was trying to figure out. Like I understand the state allotment for teacher's assistance decreased to 1.6 million.
Right.
And that's why we had to cut ours and eliminated 24 positions. But then I look at the PRC O-27 code and it shows an actual, if you look this year compared with last year, it shows an increase of, I don't know, my glasses, I'm like 700,000.
Okay.
What page are you on? What page are you on, I'm sorry?
2-49. So how, how come that doesn't show the reduction when I can see it very clearly that the state reduced teacher assistance?
Okay. Keep in mind, whenever we had the education jobs money, we had 2.7 million that expired September 2012. We used about 1.6 of that during September for teacher assistance. So had we not had that education jobs money there, it would have been paid out of the O-27 you're talking about. And more local funds would have been needed in order to balance the budget.
September of 2013?
20, well, 2012, the reason it's higher in 2013 is because we don't have that money like we did last year. So now those expenses have to go back, yeah.
And so it would have been more like 12?
12.5, 12.6 compared to what we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I also had a question on the chart that I should have asked it while it was up there. I'm sorry.
There it is.
Classroom material, which is O-61 PR, down near the bottom there. Classroom material, it looks like it's going down by $111,000. Is there any county money that helps with that too?
We, we do help, or in the past, we've used local money to help with supplies of materials. Particularly in the past few years, whenever the state has cut supplies of materials in the state budget, we've had to do that.
Because I'm just very concerned. That's what every year, you know, at the start of school, there's just so much publicity about the teachers not having what they need to teach. And I mean, this is so fundamental to the, I mean, we absolutely have to have those materials. And to me, it should be the top priority, one of the top priorities. So since the state has decreased that amount, you know, I, I need to know more specifics about how the county is filling the gap.
Well, the county basically, I mean, we use the county money in order to supplement. I mean, we do it by an ADM basis. And typically, the ADM basis that we use, we, you know, the state doesn't cover it all. So we have to, you know, we, we supplement it with the local funding.
Do you have the exact number or do you know where to find it in?
Last year, I think I have a spreadsheet showing the past few years of how it, how it went down. But if, let me, let me look. It is in, let me see, it's in here. It's in tab 2. Page.
While you're looking.
266 and 67. I'm sorry.
Say that again?
Tab 2, page 66 and 67 shows the instructional supply last year compared to this year, the funding. The overall funding.
So is the 1.7 million?
That, that's what's currently coded to instructional supply for a budget, yes.
Okay, so it is an increase then, including all the other funds?
Yeah, when including, when include, that's, that's state and local.
Okay.
The two combined.
Dr. Baldwin, can you, or Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Baldwin, could, refresh my memory. I think I'm aware. We, we've dealt with multiple years of state budget cuts, reductions, reversions, all of the different things. And one of the things this system, I think to its credit, has done is established a priority of things that were, we weren't going to touch. And a lot of that, a lot of that impetus and probably some of the people in the room came from your principals and teachers that we wanted to protect that classroom teacher and those assistants as much as we could. And when we've had to deal with cuts from the state level, that we, we've, we've, we've done them in things like instructional supplies and other areas. Is that, is that accurate? Is my memory good? I've slept since the last time we talked about it.
Memory's very good. In fact, several of those principals are sitting back there. And I can recall 2008, 2009, when every principal in this system was brought up in this room and we, we taught budget strategy. And every single principal in unison said, "Classroom teachers will be protected." If something has to go in this budget, and this has stayed true, that's why your memory's good. This has stayed true throughout, since '08, '09, all the way through the sequential years of budget challenges. We have said, hey. We have said, "Hey, protect classroom teachers. If cuts have to be made, we make those cuts in areas outside of our human resources." That, we, we try to put that emphasis in. We also have to remember that we do get some local support with instructional supplies. But we've also seen through these years, the state themselves, the General Assembly cut state instructional supplies. So, you know, I, I, I agree with, Ms. Baldwin says, we start this school year, we, you know, teachers need supplies and equipment to teach. We understand that. Thank goodness, we live in a community where we've said every year now, the last five years, they've come to the table, and they, they've helped us with those. But, but if we hadn't taken certain cuts in those areas, we would have less teachers requesting the supplies.
And I, the reason I ask the question, to me, it's important, we're not sitting in Raleigh, and we're not sitting in the county commissioner chambers. And all budgets and all levels of government have had to deal with these types of things, from the federal to the state, from the states to the local, from the local to us. And I, I just think we have to be careful as a, as a board and as a body about casting stones or casting aspersions about what somebody has or hasn't done for us, or wasn't, hasn't been asked of other groups. Because I just think it's, it's short sighted, and it doesn't help us going forward. I agree, we need more money. I think there's probably a lot of places we could try to get more money. But we have to work together to make that effort to do those things. And when we deal with these types of issues that we've dealt with since '08, '09, we got to prioritize. And find a way to do the best we can. And the, the easy thing is if we were getting increases in all those line items every year. Because then we'd be hunting for ways to spend it. But that's not happening. It may not happen in any of our tenure on the board, of the folks that are sitting here. Again, the crystal ball, we just don't know. But I just think we've got to be careful as a collective body and as a board of how we go about doing those types of things. And understand that our county governments are dealing with the same issues. And until I have in front of me Buncombe County and Guilford, or Alamance, or Cabarrus, or anybody else's county budgets, to know what those counties are spending their money on, to even know if they're all spending their money on the same items, I don't know. If 25% for us, and 40% over here, and 30% there, it even means anything. Because I don't know what else they're doing. And I don't know what we're doing as it compares to them. So, I, I think we, I just think we need to step back with some of that and be careful where we, where we go moving forward with those, with those types of things as it relates to our budget.
Well, and I can sincerely say, I think that our public, our stakeholders, since '08, '09, can look at this, look at our school system and how we've handled these budget challenges. And I think our entire team, this board, this administrative leadership out in this audience, our staff out in the schools and our community have done a remarkable job of handling. When you actually look at the seriousness of the cuts that have taken place since 2008, '09, and again, we're able to stand in front of this public and give the type of results that we just gave you tonight, I think it's remarkable. And I, I'm going to echo Mr. Craig, what I, I think he was, he initiated. And so, once again, I'm going to play the part and the role of Paul Revere. I'm going to say it very loudly. Since '08, '09, at the height, the federal funding into this school system, I think it was as high, Roger, as high as 14%. The numbers that I just calculated a couple of days ago put it at 7%. It will decrease next year because we will lose all of that, Race to the Top funding will go. We will basically lose all of the supplemental support funding that kept this school system, and school systems across this state afloat since '08, '09. Now, I don't care who comes to the table. I don't care if it's the county, I don't care if it's the, the General Assembly. I don't care if it comes from Washington, again. And I'll tell you, I don't care if it comes from the business community. Because I spent the last four weeks with Ms. Cheek out there extending our request for their help. It doesn't make any difference where it comes from, but I'm going to tell everyone this loud and clear, that again, we, we are facing a tremendous challenge when those federal funds come to an end next year. So, we all have to continue to work together and look at every source out there in this community to maintain the level of, of, of financial resources that we're currently working under as, once again, the 85th out of 115 school systems in terms of federal, local, and state funding per pupil. Off my soapbox.
Okay.
I'm sorry to...
All right.
I have a question about the cost-saving measures that were taken. Can you give me a rundown on, you know, how, did administrators, you know, every principal look at their school, or every department, you know, to try to come up with ways to save money? Were they asked to, to look for maybe a 5% or 10%, you know, cut? Is this, is this a process that we went through?
Well, each year, the, the departments always look and go line by line in their, in their, in their budgets. And some, some things we were able to, to decrease, you know, we were able to negotiate some contracts lower. And, you know, there, there are several things we were able to do. It's just, you know, we get the pieces real late, but, you know, we try to do what we can within the, within our means and within the budget that we are allowed to, not discretion, but, you know, what, the money that we're allowed to have a little bit of use on, you know, the state pretty much tells us where we need to spend this, you know, these, these type of things. So, of cour, yeah, we definitely go line by line and try to, try to see areas of improvement and efficiency.
The other thing that's challenging to do that is the slide that showed that 80%, 87% of our dollars are on people. So, it's hard when you look around and, to reduce your costs when 87% of our people...
When insurance is going up, health insurance is going up, workers' compensation's going up, and there's no additional funding to, to cover those things, and we still have to pay it, so, you know.
Yeah, I'm seeing other districts do things like merging their maintenance and facilities departments together. Cabarrus did this a few years ago. I'm seeing us adding some positions in the central office instead of looking for ways to do that, you know, such as merging those departments. I mean, you may only, you, you're only duplicating maybe the director or assistant, and an assistant director. I just see a real aversion here to, you know, look at those serious types of, you know, cost-saving measures. For example, what if Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools shared the same technology department, for example? We already share the same transportation department, which is, I think, a very effective way. You saw our efficiency rating for that. There, is anybody looking at these ways to improve our cost savings? And possibly, you know, having these partnerships with the city school?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Baldwin, Mr. Craig, we met with some of the Asheville City Board, and actually discussed some of those things. So, those are some things that we can discuss in the future about trying to do.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that meeting, so thank you for letting me know.
Ms. Baldwin, I, I don't want to give the public false misleading information. When you say that the central office is adding positions...
Where have, what, what positions have been added, would be my question?
Yeah.
Can you name it?
Assistant Director of Finance...
Their titles, titles change.
Titles change?
Assistant Superintendent, the Associate Superintendent was never replaced. A title was changed. But that, that's totally false information to say out to that public, that central office was reduced. That's totally false. Totally false.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for the question to be called on the motion.
Can I just show the numbers?
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Craig?
I was just going to point out, if you look at PRC code 02, which is 2.10, if you look at total paid of all funds, and this is the PRC code for the central office, it's 1.9 last year, and 1.8 projected for a budget for this coming year. So, I don't know where the increase is that you referred to.
All right. All in favor of adopting the budget?
I'm sorry, I wasn't finished with the discussion. I wasn't aware that we were ending.
Well, nobody said anything, so...
I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have another issue, and I'm sorry if I phrased what I said wrong about crea, it was creating new positions was what I was referring to that had happened in the past year in the central office. Also, I wanted to talk about the fund balance, and I don't feel the same fear and worry that I've, I've seen up here exhibited by some members of the board. Because as a board, we have the right to ask our county commissioners to dip into their fund balance, which is $50 million of undesignated money, if we do run into a crisis. So, I don't think that we need to be afraid of that. Union County School Board just sued their county commissioners for not giving them enough money, and they found over $200,000 in unencumbered money. And Union County, and the judge ordered that the county pay them more than the school system had even asked for, so, which is remarkable. So, I think, you know, the county, you know, sitting on that pot of gold there, $50 million, you know, while our teachers don't have classroom supplies, is just egregious. And I feel that, I, I'm not sure why we're just sitting back here and letting the county commissioners pretend to give us all this money when in actuality, they are not. They are only giving us 43.5% of the property tax money.
Mr. Chairman, I reiterate.
And they can't explain to me, don't interrupt.
She's making a speech, Mr. Chairman.
I have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, she's making a speech, not asking a question or debating anything.
I have the floor, Mr. Bryant. Point of order.
Let's, let's, let's wrap it up.
I am wrapping it up. Basically, that, when the county manager can't even tell me how she's spending that 56.5%...
Ms. Baldwin, I think you're out of line there. And you're being, and you're being repetitive in your, in your statements. We're hearing the same things over and over.
Please tell me what I just repeated.
I think everyone's heard, so, please finish up, please finish up quickly until we can move on.
It is making an impression.
Well, basically, I'm saying that I'm going to vote against this budget because the county is not supplying enough money, and we have not looked at enough ways to save money in our administration. We haven't asked our departments to look at 5% or 10% cuts so we could preserve that money for the classroom, so our teachers can have instructional supplies. So, I just wanted to explain that.
You've said that three times, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
My opinion is, I would rather work with the county commissioners when we are in serious need of the money next year. It seems to me, from looking at the budget, and I know this is my first year looking at it, but I see the true emergency coming next year when we lose those federal funds. And I don't think this is your, the year to be asking the county commissioners for that emergency money. It would be best served to ask them next year.
Right, and I wasn't advocating asking for the emergency money. I'm just saying, where's the property tax going?
Okay, we've heard that also.
Can I just make a statement?
Yes, sir.
And Dr. Baldwin, correct me if I'm wrong. Each year, when we go through the budget process, a request is made by the board to the county commissioners for funds. Is that not correct?
It's correct.
And every, I talked to, I've talked to Joe Belcher, David King, David Gant, and they've all assured me that the schools would be taken care of, we simply have to ask. And, you know, every year, the requests we've made of county commissioners, they've granted. So, I'm not, I just hate to see someone trying to throw the county commissioners under the bus when it is not necessary. So, that's the only comment I have.
All right.
Well, I also wanted to mention, the board does not make that request to the county commissioners. In this letter from Dr. Baldwin, basically, the administration makes a decision and asks the board, they give us a little presentation. You know, I did not support asking for more social workers. Now, we have 27 social workers, we just got money to pay for six more, not teachers. I'm talking social workers. We have a Department of Human Services that's getting the brunt, the biggest portion of the county budget right now. And it seems to me there's an awful lot of overlap. We have guided the count, school counselors, now by law, have to spend 80% of their time directly with students. So, there's going to be counselors spending more time with students. I don't think this is a time that we need to hire more social workers.
You think that's a bad thing?
When we have counselors that can do that. I'd rather see the money...
Is it a bad thing that they're going to have to spend 80% of their time with students?
No, that's wonderful. I'm just saying, why are we hiring more social workers? You know, has anybody looked at the overlap with the county Department of Social, Social Work?
Mr. Chairman, again, I would ask that we call the question.
Let's move on, Mr. Chairman.
Well, this is all in the budget that we're getting ready to approve, and you're not willing to talk about it.
We've talked about it.
Well, we've had several work sessions where we've discussed the budget at length.
And this is the final approval of this budget.
That's exactly right. So, all in favor of this budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the STEM High School. Mr. Warren, I just want to say thank you. You're doing a wonderful job as our interim director of Budget and Finance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we take a seven-minute break? Five minutes? Three?
Okay, it'll be, it'll be fine.
I'll negotiate. I figured I'd ask for seven to get...